I'd like to bring this meeting to order, please. Would you, thank you all for coming. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Let's really hear it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation under God's rule and justice for all. Now, this flag I got from my grandmother from down in Philadelphia, who used to wind her little part of her street. The flag, I'm not even sure there's 50 states stars on there. Just, just as an aside. I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Here.
Mr. Petrowski?
Here.
Ms. Dykett? Ms. Dykett?
I think you said me, my audio keeps going in and out, but I'm here.
Okay. And Ms. Bells?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. New business. Under new business, we're going to entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation that for school year 2019, 2020, all instruction will be done remotely effective through June 5th, which will be the last student day.
So moved.
No, wait, no, wait. Is there any public comment to inform the school committee? I don't, I don't even see Carl anymore. Seeing none. Let's hear the motion, please, Ms. Shumway.
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation that for school year 2019, 2020, all instruction will be done remotely effective through June 5th, which will be the last student day.
Second.
Discussion. Dr. Brown?
Thank you. I sent electronically a memo. And if you would give me the opportunity, I'd like to go through it with you. That's okay. This is the memo dated April 11, 2020. And it's RE 2019, 2020, school year. And I hate doing this. I don't think there's a superintendent out there that feels good about this sort of a thing. But after I met with the administrators and talked with the association, it is our consensus to recommend to you that we do all instruction remotely and that in-person instruction be discontinued through June 5th. I've also recommended that June 8th to 12th be set aside for professional development for the staff. I think that I need to bring in people and ask them, when I'm talking people, our educators, what they need to help wrap up the 1920 year. I need to talk with them about how we do end of year things, whether it's class assignments or student placements or the other work that happens. And then we need to start thinking about how to open school for school year 2021. I think it would be irresponsible if I said, everything will be just as it was and we'll have a regular, smooth opening. But I think if you don't have some planning that goes into that, then you're going to have a hiccupy beginning to that school year. And from what I'm hearing, there's some talk now that the school year may be delayed for a school 2021. So I think we need to start thinking about that. So as, and this is the second paragraph, as I shared with you on April 8th, our teachers have been working with kids in a variety of platforms and I listed them here. And I, I want to say this every time I have an opportunity. We have amazing educators in this district. They have really stepped to the fore. And whether it's working with kids in Zoom or Google classrooms or each other and doing professional learning communities, they have stepped it up. And unlike some of their colleagues in districts I won't name, happen to live in one, they have really just been so impressive. As a matter of fact, I get a call tonight from one of the Augusta board members asking for our plan. So I'll do, I said, I'm gonna go to a meeting, but I will provide that to them. And so on page two, Matt Shea found this great chart. I wish I could take full credit for putting it together, but it's not mine. And it really goes through the different phases for a school department's response to COVID-19. And so we're moving into phase three. We've done phase one, which was basic access. And to take you back to where we were now, gosh, a month ago, it was pretty basic. We wanted to make sure that students had food. That quickly followed by making sure that they had access to technology. And so we rolled the laptops. Every single one that we had went out the door in grades three to 12. We started with providing PLCs for our teachers. In phase two, we wanted to put resources out there. So we redid the website. And if you've been to the website or went to the website in the last month, you saw a lot of resources for parents and families. And so we were working to knowledge. We did not do new instruction, but now we're ready to go to phase three. And this is deeper learning. This is designing instruction for higher level learning, not just recall. It's beginning instruction for, thank you. I, Matt, that must be you. Okay. Designing instruction for greater student agency, interactivity and authenticity. And you're going to be experimenting with teaching modalities because testing mandates have been removed. So if you're a classroom teacher, this is like an unfettered opportunity to go, yee-haw, I don't have to worry about the MEA this year. I don't have to worry that my kids are going to be taken an assessment that will take hours and days out of my classes. So this is where we're going to go with deeper learning. And then in phase four, this is looking ahead. It's paying greater attention to the future. That's one of the reasons that I'm recommending that the district offer its teachers PD in June. We want to talk about some of the equity challenges that we think we have. There has been some unevenness. There's always unevenness in the school department. I'd like to say that that's never the case, but I would be misleading you. But we want to take a look at where those uneven, uneven places may be. We want to design our future learning and teaching opportunities. And we want to be better prepared for distance learning should this happen again. I think that, again, it would be irresponsible to think that this is the only time we will ever need remote learning. Snow days, you all know how much I love snow days, may become a thing of the past. As we have now been forced into a situation where we've had to learn how to use remote technology. So there are some pragmatic things. This is also on page two of my memo to you. We needed to put some structure. And so, working with the administrators, we felt teachers would work remotely approximately 20 hours a week to design, implement and support an effective program for their students. Ed techs are supporting teachers. I checked in with the building principals and that's happening now. Ed techs call students, they check in, they follow up and they support what's being done with the classroom teacher. We felt like that would take approximately 17 hours. You're going to be directed again by their immediate supervisor. We want to make sure that they're connecting with every student and their family as developmentally appropriate. So we're calling, we're emailing. If we can, we're using an internet-based platform. We're doing, I think Mark talked about on April 8th, being in a classroom, the virtual classroom, where the social studies teacher grouped and regrouped the kids. I mean, how cool is that? You know, that, that's just all what's happening. So each team will collaboratively design, develop and communicate a weekly learning menu so parents know what's coming. It will be posted. It will go on classroom web pages and it will go out if we need to, using other forms of communication, generally on Friday and Sunday for the following week. We believe that our staff needs to establish office hours and this is for their sanity. I've been, I've been hearing from teachers that they are just knocking themselves out to respond 24/7 to student emails. And I think that demonstrates the professionalism of our staff. But I can't have them burn themselves out. They've got to have realistic boundaries when you can reach them. And so we're going to ask our staff to establish office hours when parents will know or students will know when they can reach them. And then, based on, this is also on page two, teachers will be working on delivering direct instruction, literacy and math, that's at the grade school. And I gave some approximate hours and times here. At the middle school, we're going to be doing the same thing, but adding social studies and science. Lori sent me some information about what special education we'll be doing. This is on the top of page three. They're going to focus and support on students' IEP goals and their accommodations. Services will be determined with parental input and tailored to individual circumstances and the needs of our kids. And they may look different depending on what student they're working with. And we're going to provide instructional materials. And the goal is to assist the students in making the gains on their IEPs. It goes on to say that students will conduct class meetings. By the way, Mark lost his power. He said he, he called me about 20 minutes ago and said, Connie, I'm sorry, I don't know what to do. If I drive to where my cell will work, that's a half an hour back and half an hour in, he lives like way out in the Williecks. So, so Mark, don't worry. You know, if there are questions for the high school, we'll field them. I think Joel, Joel, are you here? Where's Joel?
Yep, he's here.
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, yeah.
We'll make sure that if there are high school questions that I can't answer, we'll communicate them back. So at the high school level, teachers are reviewing their curriculum, making decisions regarding those skills we consider essential, the things that are absolutely imperative for kids to have before they go to the next grade level. We also want to talk about the social and emotional needs for kids. This is a tough time for families, tough time for kids. Their routines have been interrupted, their friends are unavailable in a, in a way that they typically have. I know we have internet. I know, for example, my daughter has all kinds of, kinds of groups that she talks to, but they can't see them, they can't touch them. And it's really hard on students. So we want to make sure that we are tending to that. Lita and the guidance counselors are checking in. Our nurses are going to set up office hours for families to make sure that if there are medication issues or social, emotional issues, emotional issues, that they have a touchstone for kids to go to. Let's see. Talked a little bit about what's going on for AP and dual enrollment classrooms. And then, next to the last paragraph here, essential staff are going to be called back after April vacation. Essential staff includes things like our maintenance people, our school building secretaries. And they will not be in the district at the same time. So for example, Troy and George and Kevin are all going to have different hours so that they don't work together. Now, that's going to be hard for them because they often do a lot of work together, but it's imperative that we practice good social distancing. We need to have the schools get ready for next year. That includes starting to put together purchase orders and things that people will need. So we do need our staff in. And as I said in closing, I want to thank everybody who's here in the schools. And that includes the people on the school committee. This has not been an easy time. I know you're taking a lot of calls from constituents. Usually, they're not calling to tell you they're, how happy they are. They're calling because they're concerned about something or they've heard some, some other district is doing it a different way and they're wondering why we're not doing it that way. The media is not particularly helpful with that. Our collective efforts will greatly reduce the spread of the highly infectious COVID-19 and will help our kids eventually get back to normal. So be happy to answer any questions about the memorandum.
Just show me a hand if you want. Ms. Shumway?
Thank you, Dr. Brown, for all of this and the administrators for really thinking about what you can make work under these circumstances. A couple of questions that have been brought to my attention, mostly from parents of junior age, junior level students. So unfortunately, with Mark not being here, we might not be able to have them answered right now. But I do want you all to be aware of some of the questions that are, that are coming out. So obviously, the college application process is on the minds of a lot of junior parents and students. And that process is going to, oh, Mark just joined us.
Hi, Mark.
Oh, hi, Mark. Your power play. Actually, your timing is great.
He fed the mice.
Kristin, would you start over again so that Mr. Campbell can hear your whole question, please?
Absolutely. Justin, to Mr. Campbell, because of course, regarding the high school level, a lot of the questions that I'm getting are from junior level parents. And their questions are regarding the, you know, what the college process is going to look like in light of all of this remote learning, which obviously we don't have control over. But one of the areas of concern is what our transcripts are going to look like. And so when I noticed that it said that all grading will be pass/fail, I'm wondering if we can elaborate a little bit more on that because, because on certain transcripts, and on certain colleges have been making announcements that they would be accepting pass/fail for quarter four, but that they would be looking for letter grades for the other quarter semesters. And so I'm just wanting some more information as to what the transcript for the high school will look like.
So, that is a good question. That's a question that Dr. Brown put to me yesterday. And it was my understanding we were going pass/fail. I have talked to my leadership, teacher leadership team and they kind of, they support the idea of pass/fail. What you shared here tonight is something that I'm unaware of. It was my understanding that colleges were also looking at, particularly the dual enrollment classes that we're doing. They're going to post those as pass/fail if the student wants them. I have not heard that colleges are looking at letter grades or numerical grades for, at a final average. I'm not sure how you can do that with three grades that are numerical and one that's alphanumeric, pass/fail. You know, I think that's something we would have to explore further.
Okay. So my only, my only reason for bringing it up is that if the, the school committee was to make a directive that all grading was to be pass/fail and then we found that that was going to create issues for our students who are applying to programs that were going to require more information on the transcript, that it wasn't, you know, boxing those students in. I certainly, everything is so up in the air right now, but I wouldn't want to make a decision now that's then going to cause issues for those students later on. And along those.
So the good news is, I believe our teachers are going to be putting numeric grades in. They're not going to be, I mean, there's a way to make it happen in power schools so that they do not actually get calculated in. But the teachers themselves wanted to know and the students wanted to know just how well they were doing fourth quarter. So we are going to actually be putting numerical grades in. So if it came down to it, we could go back and for an individual student, we would then produce a transcript that reflected their grade through all four quarters.
Okay.
So, and the other thing that, because my guidance council was at the leadership team meeting last night and she explained that what we would do is using our school profile sheet that we send out to every college that students apply to, we would explain to the colleges what has happened and why our grades, our students' grades look the way they do. She thought that that would alleviate most of the issues.
Okay. That would be, that would be great. And the other thing coming that I'm hearing is that with, you know, SATs constantly being moved, ACTs being moved, and what that looks like, if there was a way for our guidance council to direct some time to maybe contacting parents in the junior and senior class with an update of some sort, that might be a good thing to just have some contact so that they can feel less panicked about what it means going forward. So that's just what I'm hearing from some communities.
And Kristin, I heard that last night from my leadership team. They'd heard a lot from students and parents that they just weren't sure, there was lack of communication between students and parents. And parents hadn't been looking at the website for the information that was being updated. So I am going to be doing a mail-in here during April vacation so that we, once this meeting is done and once I have my student leadership team meeting tomorrow and convey back with Dr. Brown, I'm going to draft a letter and one of those pieces of information that I can put in there would be information about the SAT, the ACT and, you know, how to find that information on the college board.
Fantastic. That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just had one technical question.
Mr. Petrowski?
On the last page, third to the last paragraph, it talks about we'll be called back beginning April 27th. With what the governor has now announced with extending her emergency powers through May 15th, should you be putting a date in there at all? Or saying something that after the termination by the governor, okay, that it's okay to come back? We'll call people back?
Well, these are essential staff, Joe. So to my understanding, essential staff has, even under the first emergency order, has included some school people.
Okay.
So, for example, she has given payroll people, secretaries, bookkeepers, superintendents, the status that they, they need to come in and do, you know, run the school districts. So we're considered essential. And I would put maintenance people in that, too. I, I've got a lot of work at the middle school, for example, about down trees and things that have got to get picked up. So I think, I think they're okay.
Okay, good.
Any, any other discussion questions? Yes, Ms. Bells?
I have a housekeeping question. Has, have the middle school kids been able to clean out their lockers yet?
Karen, do you want to respond to that?
They have not, Susan. I have not worked out a schedule for that to occur yet. We're going to have to do it at some point, but what I would like to do is do it, excuse me, in conjunction with hopefully the return of their laptops. If they have to come and do something, I would like to do a swap.
That sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay. Let's, let's take this motion for a vote. All in favor? Well, no, I'll call the roll. Yea or nay? Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
I, if it's what Connie had presented to us, I am for it, yes. But I literally heard nothing. So I, I don't know what, I mean, I can hear you now, but most of my boxes are completely black and I don't even have names on them. So I don't know what's going on. But if it's what Connie had presented and showed us, then yes.
It is, without any changes. Okay. And Shumway, I mean, Ms. Dykett, yes. Ms. Bells?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're about to contemplate a motion to approve the revisions to the Winthrop Public School FY 2019, 2020 school calendar as recommended by the superintendent. And again, I'll ask for any public comment. Oh, Janet, you have a message from Matt. Okay. I see none. I'll entertain that motion then, please.
I move to approve the revisions to the Winthrop Public School FY 2019, 2020 school calendar as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion. Dr. Brown?
No, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. Only the school committee can change the calendar. And by doing so, we're moving the last student day to the 5th of June. And the balance of that would be spent in professional development with staff.
Thank you. Ms. Shumway?
I just have one question. On April 17th, it's still listed as a teacher comp day. Usually that's for, for conferences. And if those conferences aren't happening, is it still going to be considered a teacher comp day? Is that a day that the students wouldn't be having Zoom classes or expecting things to be due on that day still? Or are we changing that because we haven't had those conferences?
So I believe those conferences are going to still happen. That's a good question, but I don't think it will happen face to face. But, well, unless it's this way. But it won't be in person. Karen, did you have a?
I do. Middle school has already done four nights of conferences. Our last night of conferences was the week before we left. So my teachers are definitely entitled to that comp day and I will be putting that message out to parents prior to Friday. They've already worked all of their time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Here we go with the roll, yea or nay? Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Oh, you heard us. Ms. Bells?
Yes.
And I vote yes, too. Motion passes unanimously. Seems like a pretty short meeting.
It's efficient, Chairperson Geyer.
Yes. For the public out there, which I don't see signed in, is there, are there any public comments?
Actually, I actually have one question for Dr. Brown. Did you want me to mention about the PE PG update?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Geyer, if I could do that right now, it's not really a comment, it's more information. So I'm going to share our screen, actually. So.
Well, we, we didn't hear you. It's more what?
Okay. It's just information. It isn't anything you have to vote on. But the steering committee for teacher evaluation met earlier this week. And we have some options that we, that they voted on and accepted. In essence, if we look at the bottom two sections about continuing contract and administrative people, for continuing contract, we are basically rolling this year and next year to be considered as one, a one year for PE PG purposes for teacher evaluation. So that's if you're contract, if you're a continuing contract person. If you are administrators, you're also basically doing the same thing. For probationary staff, they've changed a couple of dates to make them, the growth plans and the evaluations that were required to make them, one was due last week and one is now this week instead of May 1st. And their evaluation says probationary staff for third-year probationary teachers will be taken as a whole rather than particularly just one particular year, which I think is kind of what we did anyway. So these, this information is something we've talked about for about a month or so at this point. But we forgot that it had to go through an official steering committee vote. So we put that together earlier this week and they voted on it. And this is coming to you and agreed upon by everybody that this is just like common sense, basically. So if there, if anybody wants to read that or have any questions, I'd be. I'd be happy to take them right now.
Anybody have a question?
No.
Would anybody like to see it in written form, sent to you? We're okay with it?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shea.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Bells?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Or is there anybody opposed? Raise your hand. Seeing none. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.